Right, it's six o'clock, meeting of the committee of the whole will come to order. All members are here with the exception of Alderman Tenorio who was excused.
And all the women Christians.
Oh, the persecution isn't here.
No.
Ah, two excused. Um, first order of business approval of minutes is June 7th.
Must be approved.
The movement second to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Item D2, presentation and discussion of options to mitigate persistent structural deficit.
The last time that we talked to her, having the departments put in information regarding the ideas that were left over, there's some information that it's still incomplete, so I don't have anything for you tonight, so I'm gonna work with departments to get that complete, to present to you in the future, so there's really nothing to discuss under number two at this point.
You can move on to number three, status and information regarding the OpenGov software solution.
So I think you're all familiar with our new licensing and permitting software, it's called OpenGov, and it's really taken us very far on our virtual city hall journey. We wanted to take this opportunity to let the council, to show the council what it looks like and how we're using it and how it could be used by yourselves and the public, the majority, we waited until now because June 1st, the majority of our license, our public-facing items are now in OpenGov, so, and we've also gone through, like from the clerk's office perspective, we went through our first renewal process and things, so, which was a million times better than last year. Do you agree?
It wasn't a problem for me, but I have several concerns.
Yeah, so, um, so we, the objectives were for people to have an understandable customer experience, no matter which department they were going to, to look at streamlining their processes, having more collaboration with departments, and improving reporting and process transparency, and a favorite of accepting online and credit card payment.
Yes, thank you.
So, we've been succeeding.
That's me, yeah.
The other person is not here that has a lot of feelings on that, so, we've been successful with that. So we implemented, we had core team members from each of our departments who were liaisons to the departments, the majority of these people actually put together our record types, so they were developers in a way, but it's really a kind of a drag and drop program. There is logic and things like that, and, but, once you do it a couple times, it's fairly easy to do, so this is a list of all the team members that were involved in that. And then, as of last week, we have, over eighty workflows are in there, more than fourteen thousand transactions, eight hundred thousand in online payments, and then, close to ten thousand parking permits, which is pretty significant. We've been using that since November.
November 1st.
Yeah, so that's why there's a little bit more, plus, we just have more parking permits than anything else, so, um, so, there's a lot of benefits, we've really received a lot of positive feedback, I think I've only had like two negative things, and it was, one of them was a user error type of thing, um, but, and then other was, people just don't like computers, so, generally, it's a lot of positive, it's reduced processing time and rework. Today, we were able to approve a bartender license in less than four hours, in the past, but that was also with ordinance change, in the past, it would've taken at least three weeks, so, three hours, three weeks, it's kind of impressive. We're able to, um, the public's able to see their current status, we can put external and internal comments, so we can communicate with each other on the records, instead of sending emails, leaving voice messages, notes and things like that, it can all be in there. People can schedule inspections through there, we can reassign steps, for example, if I need feedback from someone else on a step or I'm reassigning it to Jean or Jenny, it's very easy to do, uh, we can refer it to different departments if we need additional feedback, we can do renewal campaigns, so, with the parking permits, they used to just kind of wait for people to come and renew their permits, now, we're sending renewal campaigns out, so, it's a proactive type of thing, and we'll be, not that we didn't do proactive things in our other licenses and permits, but it'll be a little bit easier and more, I guess, using our technology in a better way, so, and then, the online payments again, and then, you can see a kind of a master list of all the licenses, permits, whatever's going on at a, at a location, so, we'll get into migrating some of our current things, or past things, that might take a little bit longer to view all the records, but right now, you'll see all of our current active things, or recent things that we've taken in.
I'll say with that external commenting, I applied for a license, and I was just gonna drop off a check, and I totally forgot, I applied for the license, and I got a note, said, "Just as a reminder, this will be processed once you drop it off, here's your different payment options," and it was really nice, you, it was literally right there, like, when you pulled up the email, the message was right there, you didn't have to click in to log in, the message was right there, so any external notes to folks applying for applications, licenses, I find it hard to believe when they say, if there was a comment in and we can see it, that they didn't know, because it is right there, so, it's, it was really slick.
Yeah, people will say it, but we'll know that.
Well, no, it was validated.
Uh, the next, the next steps, we're gonna be getting rid of the parking stickers, and then, the printing of overnight parking permission, so right now, I, I believe the police department, people can get permission to park on the streets, they print out a list and give it to the officers, and they look through that, this, we're finalizing OpenGov, working with Civic.
Smart.
Civic Smart, which is the, um, ticket software, so that it know, and our alpers, so as it's reading, well, it'll know which ones can, are allowed to park on the street and which ones don't, so that'll save a huge amount of time.
Alpers is the license plate reader?
Yeah, automatic license plate reader system.
So the officer doesn't have to enter it in, it'll just show up automatically?
Right, when it reads the plate.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's nice.
Right.
Even alarm goes off.
Yes.
When it's a no, just drive around till your alarm goes off.
We'll just, we'll just get some, some cop vehicles that can drive themselves and do it.
Are, is part of that, are permits, like quarterly, or, we're not ever gonna be prorated to match, or is that too much behind the scenes to be able to prorate?
I, I think.
Quarter, isn't it?
Yeah, or per month, I don't, I don't know exactly the cost, but.
I've had quite a few people ask surprisingly.
If you, if you buy it after the 20th, you get it for that month, plus the following month, so you get it from the 20th through the 31st, but if you buy it on the 19th, there's no proration, we don't have it set up that way, I believe it might be a little complicated to do that.
That's kinda what I figured.
Because we'd have to write a lot of logic, if it's this day, then, you know, that.
Then it would equal this, and then this would equal this.
Yeah, so, I think we've tried to make it, make it as fair and equitable as possible, but, the prorating could be a challenge, but, not something that we couldn't look into, so, um, we're gonna, we're working on migrating historical data, so all the property data, all the letters that people've gotten in the past, if they've gotten orders or notices and things like that, that we currently have in our property files, is that what we call it now?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna, we're working on bringing that over, but I believe there's over eight hundred thousand records, so, that's gonna be a little challenging migration.
Are you talking about paper records?
What's that?
Are you talking about paper records?
They're, they're, they were paper at one point.
They were paper one time.
They're PDFs now.
I don't, we scan a lot.
Yes, we still have a lot to scan, but, um, the majority of them are in there. Mm-hmm, so, we're just working on matching those up and bringing that over, so eventually, you truly will be able to put in an address and see everything that's, well, that we ever had a record for, or have a record for there. Um, we're working on more internal workflows, they're changing the security, so, we have some processes that, um, not everyone needs to see the details, and we don't, they don't have the security permissions down to the point where, um, we can make those active yet, so we're, we're waiting for that, hopefully that'll be done in the next six to eight months. Um, we'll be doing more renewal, renewal processes, um, we're working on an information page to make, use more plain language, a lot of times, will, people will just throw what it says in the ordinance on an information page, and while that might make sense to us, I don't know if it does, we need to make it a little bit more simple for the public, um, so we're working on that, and then, there's also a way where, if there's a project going on at a location where they maybe need, um, something from the planning section, something from the health department, something from code enforcement, something from clerk's office, you can bring it together under a project, so, you can look at where it is, I'm guessing, like electrical permits too, all that kind of stuff, you can put it under a project, so you could, you can see the progress there, and, um, also, the last thing is record type projects, so, we can set up, um, questions for people to answer, and through the questions at, and it can tell them all the things they should apply for, so, those are, those are the next steps we don't have, that's the OpenGov 2.0, um, so this, I just wanted to show you a little bit about, um, the public site and then the internal site, um, and we can certainly meet with any one of you at any point to go more thoroughly in this, I just wanted to do, it's not exactly high level, but it's not in-depth, I guess, so there's, there's a public site, and then there's, um, internal site, this is the public site, so, we have, um, on our website, we have a My City Hall page, and it has, lists all the licenses and permits, and if you click on it, it'll take you to this page, so this is where all of our public-facing licenses, permit processes are, and I'll send you guys, I'll send you this, um, PowerPoint, and then the links too, so you can, don't have to type in the long address there, so, the first thing people need to do is create an account, uh, we have information on how to do that, um, people that utilize online shopping, or whatever, emails and things like that, it should be relatively easy for them to do that, the most complicated thing is probably making sure you have the right things and the password, I guess, so, um, that's what they need to do first, and then, once they have an account, then you can click on my account and you can view, view your dashboard, it provides any information on actions required, messages, uh, Alderwoman King was talking about the email that she got, if, if she went into her dashboard, she would've seen that message here too, um, if there's any documents we have sent, like a letter, electronic letter, or a license, or something like that, it would be on this page, any applications in process, payments that they might need to make, or pending inspections. So to, so that's your account, but then to apply for a license or permit, you, um, can either type in the name, so if you're looking for a street dumpster permit, you could type in dumpster at the top, or you can, you would, you could look in these departments and see which one it might be under, the easiest way is to do, to type in the name, and we're trying to use the common names, not so, and the engineering department, not to pick on them, but they would, but I'm going to, the street occup, they would call it street occupancy application, so when someone comes in here or calls us, they don't ask for a street occupancy application, they ask for a dumpster permit, so we just added that, you know, that information at the beginning, so it's easier for people to find. So, once you find what you, whatever record you want, this is the first page that I was talking about, this is where we're trying to work on putting plain language versus just throwing up the ordinance on the page, um, so this kind of outlines, departments are working on this right now, but it outlines why it's needed, who needs it, that, any other regulations, so, um, this is not only for the, the public, but for a customer service center, they have a lot of people coming in here, they don't always know what type of licenses or permits somebody might need, but this gives them a guideline to help the customer, so.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Tenorio.
Can I ask, I mean, if we go back a little bit on the parking permits, uh, you know, I understand, I think, we have to move forward in reference of technology, but, but the fact that is, the police department, really, you know, with the sticker, i- if on the sticker you put a code, would you say would be a lot easier for the officer, the night checker, to go back on the, on, on the brain, on the system, to check out that particular vehicles, i- if he's got a permit or not? I, I mean, what happened, i- if, if you got two car parking close each others, so the officer have to get out from the, from the car to check the license plates, right?
They'd probably have to do that, yes, but they might have to do that.
So to me, I mean, it's more complicated, I think it was, it's more wasting more time, I will say, you know, to me, I think with the sticker, I think it's very effective, I mean, it's been effective for many years, but I guess if it's a better way, you know, which, which, I mean, I have no idea, you know, but I, I, I look at it, the fact that it makes more sense if you have a code, you know, you know, the officer on his computer or in a squad car, immediately, he could check it and see if the guy's up to date on his permit, you know, uh.
Oh, with a sticker.
So, so really, uh, it's something, I mean, I'm not sure what, what's better, really, I'm not, you know, but that's my, one of my questions.
I mean, that could be a complication, and I think right now, they sometimes have to get out of the vehicle, vehicle and search for the permits, any, anyways.
The stickers.
The stickers, yes, so, there is that going on, majority of the time, I would feel that they would be able to see the, the license plate, but there might be some areas where they're not able to.
Yeah, that's one of my major concerns, you know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, and they just click apply online, and then you put in your information, um, your contact information, and then, this is a parking permit, obviously, they put in their vehicle information, and then, in the case of a parking permit, they don't have to add attachments, but for other licenses and permits, um, for example, the clerk's office, we have people upload their driver's license, so we can do the background checks, or their seller's permit, things like that, so, they just, can just take a picture and upload from your phone, it's really easy, and then, they just confirm and submit, and, I just wanted to point out that if they're not ready to submit, if they're missing some information, they can actually save the draft and come back later, which is common in most other things, but it was not common for what we had previously, so.
I have a question, Rebecca, if someone goes through and they buy a parking permit on a regular basis, once they fill in all their information, is it gonna stay there?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't have to type it in every time they buy a permit.
Right, so they're, they're typically doing a, a renewal, so, with all of our license and permits this year, next year, they'll just. So, with all of our license and permits this year, next year, they'll just have to pretty much click renew.
Perfect.
Christina Lysick? Rebecca, I have uh, just a couple of questions. I came in a little late and my apologies for that. One of the biggest gripes I get as an alder is people who visit from out of town and having to sign up to just get permission for overnight parking. Is there any way to add a quick link? Because initially, before we did OpenGov, it was my understanding that people could still call into the West Dallas PD. I've tried it myself and it's a no bueno. It's, it's automatically, nope, you have to do this, you have to sign up. It's a pain. And um, I understand our constituents' reasons behind that. I wouldn't wanna go through that process to sign up when I'm just visiting out of town for a weekend. Um, is there any way to add a quick link and/or not eliminate having a person behind a desk being able to add that license plate uh, for that visitor who's here?
I believe those positions were eliminated. Not, maybe last, in last year's budget. So, I mean, that, we'd have to add those back in. As far as a, a link, Tony, I don't remember. We had this discussion, didn't we?
Yeah, so the vendor, OpenGov is pretty adamant that anyone doing business in their application needs an account. Because they end up needing to send notifications to the person, you need email address for that. Even if it's for somebody out of town that's just getting temporary permissions. I agree with you, it seems like a lot of work to create an account.
It is.
Just to say, can I park a room overnight? But right now, the vendor's been a little bit unflexible of being able for somebody to submit a transaction. They don't have any accounts set up. We can talk to them more about that.
Could we add multiple license plates to a person's account? And say, okay, I have my daughter coming in from Arizona. Can I just add that license plate to my account?
Yeah, if you, if you just log in, you can, you can put as many.
As many, okay. So that would be acceptable to do. We could let them, okay.
But you have, but right now, you have to pay for each one of them for a permit, right?
No, not for the temporary overnight, yeah, but for the other ones you do.
Okay.
And that wouldn't count against the, somebody calls in?
I think it's by the license plate number, isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
Three per month, yep.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If a person doesn't have a computer, uh, will there be computers available at City Hall?
We have these kiosks right here that they can use. I believe we have one at the health department. There's um, computers at the library and the senior center that people can use.
Okay.
So we do have availability for people.
That's important.
Mm-hmm. So, you'd get a notification that you successfully um, completed your application. And then, it'll, it'll tell you, you need to pay. You'll get an email for that. Um, and then this has information on the fee payment. People can pay online with their credit card. They can submit a check and put it in our Dropbox. They can pay cash during the times we're open. If they really wanna drop cash in the Dropbox, they can, 'cause it's secure. But if they don't wanna pay the fee, there's other options. They can mail it in.
Is that what we're charged and that's why we're charging the fee?
Right. Yes, there's, there's options. You can either do it one way or the other. And that's a more equitable way is to pass it along. Because some people's license, um, the amounts are just huge. So, to spread that out, across everybody, that would be probably not too fair.
And I would add, that's how the Wisconsin DOT does that credit card fee as well, other organizations. We are consistent among other governmental entities in that sense.
Mm-hmm. And if you have a question, as you mentioned before, you can just type in. It comes to us, we'll answer it. Um, you can print your license if you lose it later. You can print it out again. For the parking permits, we're still mailing out the stickers for now. Till we get that sorted out.
Do you, do we see a time when we're not doing any physical mailing of anything at all?
I do.
Thinking like a public hearing where we go try the neighbors about something?
I don't know if.
No, we're still gonna have to do hours on.
Yeah.
My dog license, the dog needs that metal license.
Yeah, I mean, but for the majority of things, when person, a person's interacting, we can do, we can do it electronically. So. So this just shows you can, if I have all these permits and documents, I can print them at any time. Um, this is what our next steps are. So you, we'll be able to search, the public will be able to search for a record. So they could put in a location, you know, like City Hall, um, seventy-five twenty-five West Greenfield. It will see, you'll see all the records for this location. Or you can, if you know a specific record type number, you could search by that. So there's two ways to search. So here, I'm showing you someone else's because we don't have this available. We don't have it turned on yet. We wanna make sure that we're not exposing too much information. We have to check fields and things like that to make sure, you know, we're not giving people's database and things like that. So, um, this is just showing Burnsville, Minnesota. So you would check, check, uh, select which one you wanted to see. And then, this is the location and all the things there. And then you click on whatever you wanna know about. It's got the electrical permits, building permits, things like that. Tells you the owner on the left. Um, here's more details about the property. So you have the zoning, um, when it was built, lot area, all this kind of thing. So we have a master address table where all this information comes over for all the properties in the city. Um, and then this is how you would search for a record, um, if you knew something specific.
There's been surveys done, will the surveys be on there?
Um, are those on our property files, the surveys? You're talking about like a site?
A last survey of the property lines.
Oh, a platyp survey. That's on the county record, county records have it.
Do we have that?
Are we stealing this from McLeo from the, from the county thing?
No, this is our stuff.
That's ours.
The county already has a, a search. I would not wanna duplicate that.
But if we have it in our records, we're not gonna not bring it over. 'Cause it would be too complicated not to bring it.
The only way we would, our record is pulling directly from the county to make sure there's a single source of that data. So it doesn't conflict.
The city said this and the county said that.
Yeah. Okay, so this is the intern, that was all the public site and what's coming with the public site. This is the internal site. Um, I believe the majority, I, I think I sent a link for you to sign up and many of you have done that. So you can see what we see internally. You can see um, where records, licenses, permits are in the process, our internal comments to each other, that kind of thing. Um, and it looks like this. Um, if we get assigned a task, um, we'll have this on our inbox. So we know what we have to do. Um, this is just an example of like a dangerous dog order that was sent to me. So then I open the task and do the part that I need to do. Um, I can, you can search by address, name, or record number here. So, the internal site lets you do the name too. And then, you get a little bit more information in the internal site right now. So we have um, the picture and all the details of the property. We have flags, so you can see the Aldermanic District, the inspection zone for code enforcement. We also, this is a commercial, it's us, but it's a commercial property. So it doesn't have recycling and refuse. But they're recycling and refuse flags too. So it'll tell you which week or day or that kind of thing. And then, this is, you can look up by user. So, I do a lot, have done a lot of testing. So I have a lot of things under my name. But if you're looking for a person and what type of licenses or permits they might have, you would put their name in and you could see all of those things. And then you can click in to get more details. Um, this is what a specific record looks like. Um, you have the dea, details, attachments. Um, but down in the lower left-hand side is the timeline. So that kind of tells you all the steps that have been completed. And depending upon how we have it set up, it will tell you what needs to be done going forward. And there's reports that we can run. Um, you can download them into Excel. Um, there's a lot of different parameters. So if there's something that you're looking for, um, we can write a report for you and have it available for you. Here's the exports. There's also maps. You can look at how many, whatever. So I picked how many let us help um, requests we had in the past seven days. So, this is all the locations that we've had a let us help request. So you could look if you, I don't know what you might be interested in, garbage complaints or whatever. You could, you could look and see how many we've had. Obviously, it's not gonna have like bartenders, 'cause we're, there's not a location associated with that kind of, with a person type license. Um, you can click on the dot and then you can view the location. And it takes you back to the location record. And then you see this person put in a let us help ticket. And it's been taken care of, 'cause the status is complete. We have analytics too that we can look up. And then I have a glossary for you. Like I said, I'll send it, this to you. And these are links, more information on the product. And that's all I had for that today.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, more of a comment to remind everybody, this is our third computer system that we've gone through here. And I think that a lot of people would look at that as a failure, that it took us three computer systems to finally get one that is working and is successful. I think of it as just the opposite, that I applaud our staff for recognizing that the first two were bad and, and pulling the plug and moving on to something else, uh, rather than sticking with it and marrying yourself to that. I know we'll get this through, uh, so I'm glad of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, that internal link will be in the presentation. I'm pretty sure I signed up, but I just wanna.
Yeah.
I know I'm an external user. You guys approve my license.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, closed session. Um, this discussion regarding a fire prevention fee. And for agenda, item number four, the committee of the whole may convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin Statute, section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or the investing of public funds. The committee of the whole may reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda.
We'll move into closed session.
The move in second. Alderwoman Grisham.
Aye.
Alderman Tenario.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keen.
Aye.
Alderman Roat.
Aye.
Alderman Haas.
Aye.
Alderman Ranky.
Aye.
Alderman Dielli. Alderman Weigel.
Aye.
Alderman Siponski.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
It's not a good start.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the June 28th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Person Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Ten present.
For everyone's record, we are using a new microphone system tonight, so I'm going to apologize in advance for all the buzzing and humming and whatever else might happen. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Stefanski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will, if there's no objection, take our agenda out of order this evening, and we are going to move ahead to item number four, a commendation for members and employees of the West Alice Police and Fire Department. So I would like to ask Alder Persons Roat and Lysick to join me over on the podium, as well as Kurt Copeland from our Police and Fire Commission, as well as everybody that we are honoring tonight. Please come on up. All right. Good evening, everybody. I don't know if you all want to file in behind me. Thanks. So I'm not going to go into great deal detail on this because I know this story has been told in many avenues. However, June 19th, we had a call come in for a residential fire. And tonight, we're here to honor everybody who took part in this. Their actions were incredible, their response time, their remembering their training, their thoughtfulness, their quick thinking, everything about this was outstanding. The dispatchers involved in this call were Melissa Schreiber, Kesswana Jackson, and Deborah Brandt. Police officers Ryan Schultz, Jordan Cooper, Caleb Hoff, and Ryan Stutkin arrived first on the scene. Sorry. And then Engine 63 from the West Alice Fire Department, Lieutenant Dan Rhodey, firefighters Jake Levenhagen, Tom Markhart, and Deonte Pettis arrived shortly after. Everybody was there in less than five minutes from the time of dispatch. As Engine 63 immediately began simultaneous fire suppression and victim rescue activities, they soon learned there was a child trapped in the back bedroom. West Alice officers were able to locate the trapped child, and Lieutenant Rhodey was able to enter the bedroom through a window and locate, remove, and hand the child to police officers outside of the home. The child's transport to the hospital began less than eight minutes after the arrival of Engine 63, and the child was admitted to the hospital for injuries sustained in the fire, but I am happy to say that he has been released, and last I heard, he is doing much, much better. So...kind of touchy with this thing, sorry. I just want to take a minute on behalf of the city, the entire community, the Common Council, the business community, everybody who has anything to do with the City of West Alice, and thank everybody standing behind me once again for their quick actions, their quick thinking, their training, their level of professionalism, and the skills that led to the result that we have today. I do want to offer an opportunity for Kurt Copeland from the Police and Fire Commission, if he would like to say a few words.
It's really an honor to be on the Police and Fire Commission of the City of West Alice. I think that we know probably better than most people what outstanding departments that we have, from the chiefs down to the people that, for instance, made this rescue. Every month, we get a report on both the Police and Fire Departments and the actions that they take on a day-to-day basis to save people who've overdosed on drugs, who in this case were in a fire that could have ended tragically, all the work, hard work that the police do to keep us safe. And there's not a month goes by that there are people in each department that deserve commendation. So on behalf of the commission, I'd just like to offer our certainly commendation to the police and firemen who participated in this action, as well as the police and firemen that work so hard to keep all of us safe every day. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt. So we are going to present each member with a commendation, and please join me in giving them what I think should be a standing ovation, but a huge round of applause. All right. I think we need a big group photo now. I hope everyone's all right with that. Tall people in the back. Will we all in? All right, it's all downhill from here. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will go right to item E, which is citizen participation. This is where the council can receive information from members of the public on items of interest to them. We limit this to a 30-minute period, and we ask that you keep your comments to no more than five minutes. The council cannot take action on the items raised because they are most likely not on the agenda, so we cannot interact, but we can listen. So does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right. Seeing none, and since 80% of our citizens just left, we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page one of your agendas. Move on to item G, the mayor's report. In all honesty, I was working on remarks for the presentation, so I don't have much of mayor's report except to remind everybody that this coming Friday evening is the Independence State Parade, and the fireworks are on Monday, July 4th, at State Fair Park. Also, just wanted to quickly welcome to, or I should say, mention two businesses. Kindly Coffee, which has been in the news somewhat, just had their grand opening today over on 70th Street in the school district building. Duan and Sydney are opening up, or they opened up their shop. They have coffee, iced coffees, pastries, and breakfast burritos and things. They are focusing on providing employment opportunities to people with disabilities. So they are now open. And we also had an event this afternoon for Inkwell Tattoo Company, which is right across Greenfield Avenue. They didn't get to have a ribbon cutting because of COVID, so it was actually their one-year anniversary today, being a member of our business community, and I want to congratulate John and his team at Inkwell Tattoo. That does conclude the mayor's report. Moving on to item H, do we have any Alder Persons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Person Grisham.
I think I'm going to go towards the wall. This is a great sound system. I just wanted to mention, because I saw it on Facebook, so it must be true, that Alfonso's opened today on 92nd and Greenfield, and I just wanted to congratulate them for finally opening. Crawdaddies gave them a nice shout-out, so it was nice to see that our businesses support one another. So I hope everybody comes up to District 3, 92nd and Greenfield, and visits Alfonso's and has some of those wonderful Motsi sticks. That's it.
Thank you. Any other Alder Persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I just want to do a quick recap and thank you for the, well, recap on the bicycle race that we had in West Alice, in the Beecher Street neighborhood, last week Tuesday. The inaugural West Alice Cheese Roll Race was bike races, actually, all day long. I want to say 10 different races with amateur, semi-pro, professional Olympic athletes here visiting our town as part of a southeastern Wisconsin bike race series. It's called the Tour of America's Dairyland. I just wanted to give a shout-out to, obviously, our city team working together very well on this, Public Works, Police Department, Fire, our Communications Department, and a big hand for our new special events director, or is it events director?
Tourism and Events, yes.
Tourism and Events Director, Chelsea Philmonaro. She did a bang-up job on it. And also volunteer coordinator for the day was Raisel Acrulica. She, considering the heat, I mean, we didn't have an empty post all day long. She did a great job of, you know, and I think by all accounts, I mean, for a first-time event, I would say, you know, the one thing we couldn't, the one thing that was bad was the weather. It was 20 degrees, too hot and too humid. If you remember, it was 100 degrees and muggy that day, but the athletes and the spectators, and I think, all stood up very well. I also understand that some of the neighbors over there were inconvenienced, and I believe we did a really good job of getting the word out, but we're going to be working on that communication a little bit more. We're actually having a post-event discussion tomorrow about how we're going to improve it, assuming that it's going to be back next year. So, and I think I'd like to do everything I can to bring that race back, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other reports from the Alder Persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the June 7th, 2022 Common Council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alder Person Grisham. Are there any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Moving on to item J, standing committee reports. We have two for license and health. Will we take those after recess?
Well, I mean, we can do it now. Let's, let's take it now, Rebecca.
Okay.
We got less to work after.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The License and Health Committee recommended granting of items two and three.
Mr. Mayor, the License and Health Committee, June 28th, approved those two applications to grant them the license.
Move approval?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now we will move on to item K. Alderman Lysick.
Mayor Devine. Have to remember to hit the button. If there's no objection from any of the council members, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I second it. No objection. All right. If there is any discussion, no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are in recess.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are in recess.
We're waiting for our fifth member.
I know, here. You want?
All right, all the committee members are present from the License and Health Committee, so we move on with item 27, 2022-0714, New and Renewal Class A Liquor Beer License for Sunshine Corporation, DBA, Super Bottle Depot, 1357 South 76th Street, Agent, Harpenter Corp., LLC, 22163. All right, come here.
Hi, how are you?
So, you were supposed to be in schedule last time, right?
Yes, so it was a little confusing. I was out of state.
That's fine.
So I just sent my partner, so, but it's supposed to be me.
You don't have any previous records or anything like that, right?
I worked at a gas station and liquor store for like, more than 12 years.
Okay. Have never any violations on your records?
No.
No, okay. Any questions from the committee members? So I need a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you for stopping.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Then we move on to item 38, 22-0681, 2022-2024, New Operator License, Bartender Class D Operator Application for Joel Breones, Bartender 172, Denial of Peer at 06722, License and Health Meeting.
Hello.
So, so you're the, Joel, it's you, right?
Yes, it's me, Breones, yes. I know you guys had to reschedule this a couple times. I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yes, so, so you came in front of us tonight again. Do you have any previous records?
I've had a record for my life yet earlier. I had a felony back in 2004, and I've had some possession tickets up until about three years ago, and I've been clean ever since then.
But since then, you've been clean, right?
Yes, I've had a straight job. I've gotten a child, and about to get married pretty soon, so I'm living a straight and narrow now.
Any additional question by the committee members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How did you get here tonight?
I drove.
Yeah, he's got a license.
We're showing you with a suspended license.
Right now?
Yep.
I did not receive any letter about that, and if I did, I would not be driving here, I assure you that.
The last we have is suspended unless it was corrected in the last week or two weeks.
Can I, can you tell me what it's for?
I could look it up quick.
Please.
I will need some, some more personal data from you. I don't know if you want to announce it, so if you want to come over here, actually.
Yeah, see, I know I have, I got, my goodness. Yeah, I know, I know, it's, it's not, we shouldn't hide it. See it?
Yes.
Interesting. So it shows, so it's valid now?
Yeah, that's right. Oh, that guy now?
Right.
Seems pretty, like I said, I'm, I'm going to keep up on top of everything.
Not sure where Nick got it, then.
Yeah, there's another Joel Breones, but he spells his name with a Z in the S. So I don't know if that's him, but he, I know he's got a record, too.
Well, the only way to...
So it's valid here, sir.
This is the way to check.
Yes, yep.
My apologies.
Of course, of course. I understand.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I have a few questions. Congratulations.
The baby?
The baby.
Thank you very much.
You do have a fair amount of citations, your records, even as recent as 2021, correct?
I was, it was in 2019 was when I was processed or charged with that, but the court case was finished in 2021.
Okay. What has been your process of rehabilitation?
I was doing it a lot because I used to be a professional fighter, and during my amateur career, my professional career, I obtained a lot of injuries, and I don't like to take opiates, I don't like to take painkillers, anything like that, so I stuck with that, too, as far as my caring, as far as, you know, rehabilitation for my, for my injuries. After this last run-in, I've gone into other kind of, you know, acupuncture, yoga, all these other things, I could stay away from that to help out with my injuries that occurred during my fight career, and it's helped immensely, and I don't really have to do anything like that anymore.
So any additional question for our committee members? I really need a motion of, based on his, you know, it's a pattern, you know, I mean, a lot of years of, I mean, occurrences, you know, in his life. The way I look at it, maybe his records now, it's kind of, kind of a little better, but still, I would think we need something that has, that is better, the years, really. So, again, a question, I, you know, I need a motion to deny it.
Well, I'm...
Go ahead.
The question that I had as far as your rehabilitation, now, I can understand, you know, pain pills, things like that, that you're looking for alternative measures to have dealt with your pain, where I was asking your rehabilitation, this is just, okay, cold turkey, I'm, I'm not smoking...
Yeah, yes, I'm not, I have nothing.
I'm not going to here forward. Have you had any, you know, counseling, anything?
I've had some counseling. They tell me that relapse, relapse is part of it, but I have not relapsed since those last run-in, which was in 2019, and I've been clean since then, and I've continued to be clean, and I have no wish to not be clean.
And those are the questions that I think we have as a council. What can you show us that you've had this rehabilitation? So if you're counseling, that, that's a plus for you.
Of course, yeah, I, yeah, I didn't bring anything like that with me, or like a certificate or anything like that. I just, I've talked, I've gone through chiropracting, all this, chiropractor, chiropractor, acupuncture, all these other alternative medicines that I, that just keep me away from that, and, like I said, I don't like to take any kind of pills, or, I've never liked the painkillers at all. And that's been, that was always my drug of choice, was marijuana, and as an older man now, as a father, and soon-to-be husband, I, I care more about my family than I do that.
And where will you be bartending?
I will be at heartbreakerselementsclub.com. Dot com, I'm sorry, I've been using it on the phone a lot. Everyone calls, I'm like, you just go to heartbreakerselementsclub.com. Sorry about that, so.
I have no further questions.
Any question, the, any further questions?
There's a motion made.
I'll second.
So, any motion to approve?
To approve.
All in favor of the approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Rosie, do you vote in this? There was a motion to approve in a second.
I thought you voted, uh, chose.
Well, I mean, initially, I, because based on his record, but I want to give him a chance.
Thank you.
If I see him back in six months, then it'll be out.
I respect that, sir, thank you very much.
That's what I base on it. I'd like to give you a chance.
Are you, are you a yes or no, Rosie? You're a no? No. Okay, so four in favor, one opposed.
Four in favor, one opposed. Thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot, appreciate you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Then we move on to item 39, 2022-0707, 2022-2024, Renewal Operator License, License Bartender Class D Operator Application for Dawn Schrader, Bartender 110...
Do I have to do anything after that?
Six twenty twenty-two, the license.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn was there.
I was here last week.
Yeah, you were.
That's, that was the correction, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's right. So, based on some of the updates, did you do anything different? Did you come up with the...
Oh, yeah. I, what happened with that, that turned into a warrant, they had a, my wrong, they had a wrong ad, address under my name. I don't know how that, they had an address in Union Grove, and I never, ever lived there, so when I contacted them, they fixed the address as of 6:22, and then I'm able to clear up that matter starting tomorrow. I couldn't get in until tomorrow, is the quickest I can get in, and I plan on taking care of that. And all my other stuff has already been taken care of.
Attorney Kelly, you have all the informations up to date on that?
Yes, so Attorney Serrin did inform me that this was the earliest date that she could get in, it was not by her request to be, to have this not taken care of by today, just that was the earliest date.
Ms. Chair? Dawn, I want to thank you for coming back and rough to find the situation. I'm sure it was really a surprise for you, too. Mistakes happen to addresses, everything that you went through, so I would not have a problem in good faith. I'll make a motion to approve.
I appreciate that.
It seems like you've been very diligent, you're right on top of it, so...
My dad was a cop.
It happens to be the calendar is all in your favor, and there's no sense in making you wait, you know?
Right, my dad was a cop, Keen.
Yeah, I know, when you mentioned that, I was like, oh.
He was around to see my warrant, he, yeah.
So we have an, an motion to approve in a second. All in favor of the motion to approve the license?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
And thank you for doing it the right way.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dawn, thank you.
Thank you, you, too.
Then we move on to item 20, 2022-0708, 2023-2024, New Operator License, Bartender Class D Operator Application for Quinn Harry William, Bartender 215, Denial of Peer at 6:2022, the License and Health. Hi, how are you?
Hello, I'm fine, yeah.
So I would like to ask you, was it a license from 12 years?
I really, I'm not like, computer, all that stuff, online, literate-type person. I'm still from back in the day, so when they send message, I'm looking like, oh, okay, they licensed it, so I tap the phone back down, so, I didn't know I had to tap and press and then look, but I did it last week, so now I know.
Any questions from the members?
Where would you be working?
Alibi, on 66th and Beloit.
Any more questions?
Currently, his, has a pending citation, basically.
Oh, yeah, that, I was at Walmart with my niece, and her and her friend was doing something that I didn't know about, and I was going to the car because I had my son, and we pulled out the parking lot, and I guess the police stopped us. She had been up there doing prior things at Walmart and Peewalkie, stealing, basically, and they said that since she rode with me, I was a party to the crime. I'm like, I'm not party to no crime, because I got a whole three-year-old son in the car, I didn't come up here for that. You know, I went to Walmart to get what I had to get for him, and I went back out, so that's how that pending case was on there, but I got another court date, it's August 26th or something, so.
Kelly, sound good?
Yeah, so the upcoming date looks like it's in August. This is still a pending charge, and it's not the type of pending charge to be considered. If it was a conviction, it could at least be considered by the committee, so it's up to the committee how you'd like to handle that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Take care of yourself. Then we move on to item 41, 2022-0709, 2022-2024, New Operator License, Bartender Class D Operator Application for Tina Bongoski, Bartender 221, Denial of Peer at 6:2022, License, she's now here.
Motion to deny based on second appearance.
Second.
So all in favor of denying the applications?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Then we move on to item 42, 2022-0737, 2022-2024, New Operator License, Bartender License, D Operator Application for Teresa Roy Westler, Bartender 221, Westler?
And it's the actual, this is a milk. It's fresh.
So this is...
So based on...
Yes. She's... Yes. And she's... Probably just read the police report. Ms. Weesler, looking at your current record, I have some concerns. You have two OWIs within the past three years, am I correct on that?
Technically, one is related to medication, the first one was, the second one was related to drinking.
Okay, but it's within the past?
Yes.
Within three years of each other?
Yes.
Okay, and is the second a conviction? Okay, so you've been convicted, what type of rehabilitation have you gone through?
I have gone, I have my jail sentence. I also had gone to American Behavioral Clinic, it's 104th and Blue Lawn, across from the zoo over there. I did go for a little over two months, I did nine sessions, once a week, so private meeting groups, AA, if you want to call that, I, I don't know what the technical term would be.
And your current status of your driver's license is?
Occupational.
Okay, so we have it listed as revoked, is that correct, Attorney Decker?
It's likely revoked. When, when did you get your occupational, recently?
I could grab it and look.
Sure, yeah.
If it's done revoked, nobody's told you.
So as, as part of a conviction, revocation normally would occur, but people are eligible for occupational, I believe, 30 days after that date, so it would be, she would be likely eligible for an occupational, so I guess we'll see, because it would, it would show right on the license when it was issued. Because it would, it would show right on the license when it was issued.
I'd like to do this, otherwise.
Trying to make sure. Trying to make sure.
I also have the interlock.
Um, says your occupational expired here on May seventeenth.
Really?
Because you can see the expiration date here.
So what does that mean?
You, you would have to get another occupational.
I have to get another occupational?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming you're still be eligible for an occupational, but expired about a month ago. So currently you don't have a, a valid license.
Wow.
Yeah, they only get good for six months, I believe.
Do you know how long I was supposed to have this?
Usually you, you want it for your duration of your revocation period, so it depends on your revocation period. Looks like you got it, you're probably administratively suspended and you got this shortly after your administrative suspension because this predates your conviction date.
Yeah.
Because see, your conviction date was January one of twenty-twenty-two, but you got this in November of last year. So you probably got a notice of suspension. You waited thirty days, then you went and got this so you could drive during your suspension period. And then, then the judge does a conviction like this, they impose the revocation period. So right now, um.
How come I didn't receive anything?
I don't know if the state sends any notice that you have to renew an occupational. Because I've never, I don't, I think it's one of those things where they put the expiration date on there and they say, you know, make sure you put that date down, so you go get another one prior to that date to make sure that you can continue to drive on your occupational.
So would I have the occupational until the interlock comes out in February?
No, so there, there are two different timelines, your interlock, it's likely for however long the court ordered it.
Yeah.
What, what was your revocation order? You know what it was for? How long?
A year.
One year? Okay, then, I think they both do that for a year, but they don't always line up like that, so I'm gonna double check that. Do you have a lawyer in this case or not?
Yeah.
You know, I want to talk to your lawyer about this too, about getting your revi- get your occupational, your occupational for yourself. So I would, I would reach out to your attorney. That person could help you. Probably also tell you exactly.
Thank you.
But I would definitely reach out to her to get that squared away and know what your dates are.
Green means, green means though.
It looked like it was valid until May, like you had it, you were good, these are all your times.
So it's only been a few weeks then?
Yeah, a little over a month now.
Oh, yeah, actually, we're at the end of June.
Definitely want to, I would reach out, I would reach out to your attorney because the kind of questions you're asking right now are things that the attorney will be able to answer more specifically. I don't want to guess. I'll give you some more.
Well, this counts as.
This counts.
This counts.
Well, then I would tell them that.
And this really.
You have a driver's license in this area?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would let them know that.
I don't drive anywhere anymore.
I would tell, I would tell them that.
So this really has nothing to do with the license itself.
So, so the way I see it, it seem like your driver's license are lapse, right?
Yeah, I just found that out. I, I haven't driven.
You know, you know, how can you find out just now? Because our city attorney check it for you?
So Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, so she did obtain an occupational back in November of twenty-one, likely during the court case while she was administratively suspended. Um, the judgment came out at the end of January and so I think it was a one-year, based on what she's telling me. I'm kind of going on what she's told me. A one-year revocation of her license, which is what is still in place. However, she'd be eligible for an occupational likely during this time. She obtained one, however, they expire after six months. Um, so it was expired as of May seventeenth of this year, so it's been expired for a little over a month now. I don't know if the state sends notices to people as their occupational's are expiring. So I can't say whether she would have known about this or not, other than if she looked at the license, the actual document does say that expiration date, but I'm not sure if she would have given, given any heads up around that time, if it was just on her to know that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With that being said, you said you have an interlock on your vehicle. How is that connected? If, I guess this question would be to you, Attorney Decker. If there is an interlock system, an interlizer on there, wouldn't that be reported?
Y- yes, so the, the court does, has ordered one, um.
It's not on my vehicle.
Okay, you said it was on your vehicle.
Well, married. It's my husband's.
Okay.
I don't have a vehicle.
Okay, so you're not driving whatsoever?
No.
Okay, then why would you need an occupational?
In case something happens and I do need to drive.
Okay.
Because he ended up having back surgery.
Okay, that, that was just a question. Uh, yeah, I guess my question with that being is, is if there's an interlock device that would be connected with the state reporting, wouldn't it typically, or?
It, it would be with the DOT. The person who installs it would report it to the DOT.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if I can look that up or not, if it's been reported to the DOT.
When I got out of jail, I was told I had to have it installed within a certain amount of time, but I had it prior to going. And that was in February.
Yeah, I, I can't find a way to double check whether it's been.
Okay.
Installed or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, on my road.
Where are you going to be working?
I actually have two friends that own bars. One is Harrioz and one is the Dog House. So it would just be a fill-in.
And where do you live?
New Orleans.
How are you going to get there?
By children.
Pardon me?
By children.
You know, based on your, uh, records really, and, and you let the occupational, driver's license lapse. The way I look at it, uh, there's so many jobs out there, you know, uh, and you can have a choice, uh, to not be close to a bar to serving any patrons.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
That's based upon record and.
Yeah.
Like a relocation.
Yeah, based on the records, uh, that she, uh, went through. So the motion is to deny.
Mr. Chair, if I may just add something, I'm, I'm a, a big proponent for offering, you know, second chances and whatnot. My concerns and my reason for seconding the denial would be specifically because the fact that you have a bit of a habitual pattern, close together. I do wish you well. I hope you can work this through and maybe come back to us. But one of the things we have to look at is reasonable re- rehabilitation. And with the, the occupants, uh, the occupancy, the occupational, uh, not being valid, there's just too many, too many things that I'm questioning at this point. So I just wanted to offer you that explanation at least and, uh, hope that you can come back at another time, maybe with a little bit of time under your belt and a little bit more rehabilitation.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What other re- rehabilitation are you referring to?
We look for a rehabilitation for, um, people that have the records that you have. My concern is also your record, uh, if it speaks. I would like to see probably you in maybe a year to see how you're doing. I'm really concerned.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just since the motion's already been made, there's not really.
Yes, it's a second.
Continue the discussion, but.
Fair enough.
For your benefit, one way of showing rehabilitation is to complete any type of sentencing or any type of suspension, anything like that. So if you're done in twelve months, revocation is done. At that point in time, some circumstances would have changed in your life. And so at that point in time, you could come back and ask the committee to consider it again, once you've successfully completed everything. So.
Well, I've already done all that, but I have to wait until like the interlock is off.
Until you've served the rest of your, um, conditions of your conviction. At that point in time, there will be a change in circumstances for you and it'd be more evidence of rehabilitation. You can successfully do that.
Okay.
So we have a motion to deny in a second. All in favor?
We already did it.
Already did. Already we did. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, no, we did use that one.
Good luck.
All right. Then we go to item forty-three. Twenty-two dash zero seven oh five, May twenty-two, Police Department, Tavern, Valencia Call for Service Report.
Move to place on file.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to place on file?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose the item. We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
The motion has been adjourned. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right.
There you go.
I like that.
Are we still?
Yep, my advisory.
No, are you ready? Okay. Okay.
We will call public works to order. All five members are present. We will start with item thirty-one, ordinance two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-nine-two, ordinance to prohibit dogs at Rogers Park. Alderman Stefanski.
So over the last few years, we've had two incidents. One, I know of, that did involve the police, um, that a woman and her dog were attacked. The other one, um, a dog was attacked by another dog and the, I don't know if the police ever got called, but the person, um, who had the attacking dog grabbed the dog and ran before anybody could do anything about it. The thing that broke the, the straw, that broke the camel's back for me was a couple of weeks ago when I was, uh, out in my backyard and I can see the playground across the street. And, um, there was a little kid on the playground and there was a dog running, a large dog running around on the playground, which they're not supposed to be on according to our ordinance. And, um, the little boy jumped up and down on that wobbly bridge and the dog lunged at him and growled and like, went after him, the owner grabbed the dog, put him back on his leash and ran away. And I was like, I talked to Kale and that's where I decided that maybe it's time to get the dogs out of that park. Because we do have a dog park which people can utilize for their dogs. And I just think it's on, with the amount of kids that we have over there, it's something that was bothersome to me.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, other, I'm sorry, I was like. Go ahead, please.
Alderman Stefanski, uh, have you, now you said in these two occasions, they ran away with the dog.
The police, the one that, the police, they, they know. Not that I know of. Not that I know of.
So there is no way of finding out who this potentially dangerous dog? I, I would only have concerns with prohibiting dogs from park because that, does that set a standard of how can we, you know, say one park over the next?
Mr. Chair?
Please, Kale.
Uh, no, the council has a freedom to prohibit dogs at certain parks and allow them at other parks. There's not really a, um, any type of right or connection between them. In fact, right now, dogs are currently banned at Rogers Playground over on, I think, Fifty-S sixth Street.
Okay.
Um, and then at Roger, there's, it's interesting because there's a playground also at Rogers Park. So, uh, but the playground is just the center part of it. This would actually create the entire park being prohibited from any dogs being in there. People could still walk their dogs on the sidewalk around the park, but could not cut through the park if adopted. So to answer the question, no, it would not create any type of precedent or requirement to ban any other places. You can pick and choose which parks you want to allow and not allow.
Okay.
Aren't all dogs supposed to be leashed when they enter a park?
They're supposed to be leashed all the time in the city.
Yes.
Except, yes, except the dog park.
I believe they're contained within the backyard of private property. They can be off a leash.
Yeah.
But in a public space, they need to be leashed at all times.
Right.
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, the, the dog park, not to all of the dogs going in at the dog park locations.
At Rogers Park?
Whatever you phrase that.
Because I have Roger Barker in my district too, you know?
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion approved?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Chair?
Mayor Devine, thanks. I just wanted to, um, speak on the motion quickly. I had talked to Alderman Stefanski today. I, I just had a couple of concerns about this that I wanted the, the committee to consider. One is, um, we found out during the dog park process how many dogs, dog lovers, dog owners we have in the city. What concerns me on that front is that the leash law should have covered this already. I'm worried about, you know, as we're trying to attract young professionals into the community, a lot of them, as we know and studies, I know millennials are tired of being studied, but a lot of them would rather have a dog than a spouse. I think that's.
It's true. I'm not a grandma.
Cheaper. I just, I just.
I'm a cat man.
Small concerns about, about the message that this sends to the, I, what I believe is that, you know, our strategic plan on bringing people to the community, usually dog owners tend to be very responsible, um, community members, there are bad ones because I also sit on the committee that deals with dangerous dog appeals. However, you know, I, I just worry about the lack of public input on this from the neighborhood. You're there a lot more than I am, you know, like I said on the phone today, uh, a couple of years ago, I was there and I did see a woman training her dog and I recognized the training techniques because it was the same trainer I was using. And I asked her, I said, hey, are you going to Todd? And she said, yeah. And I said, I recognize the techniques that they're using. So I just, that's my concern. And I also am a little bit concerned about enforcement where, you know, this is going to be another thing that police are going to have to respond to. We know they're stretched thin. And I'm also a little bit concerned about just the inconsistency from park to park where if, if a police officer does have to respond and then check with dispatch and say, which is this park? You know, does this park allow dogs? Does this park not allow dogs? You know, there's, there's just a lot of little, um, minor concerns. It's nothing that is going to bring me to veto it or anything, but I just, I just wonder if this is just taking the huge big chomp. Maybe that's the worst analogy I could use right now, but.
Cat jokes, Mayor Devine.
Yeah, but just, you know, take, taking drastic steps for something that might be more easily, um, addressed by, you know, additional, um, interaction with the neighborhood and, and just seeing if the departments, if police, when they're on patrol in that section can just pay more attention to off-leash dogs in that, that, that those are just my concerns that I'd ask that you consider when you vote.
Mr. Chair? Basically, I, I, I totally agree with you. Maybe it's some signage that all dogs should be leashed.
And I, we even talked about that this morning, about additional, you know, social media messaging and just a reminder, maybe in our, in our magazine that reminding people, because I get more complaints about Greenfield Park, which I realize is a county park, about dogs running off-leash there. Um, I get some about McCarty, I, you know, I, I just don't get a lot at Rogers. And, and I'm giving you full credit, the fact that you live right there and you probably see a lot more going on there than I do. But that's just what I wanted to share.
I'll withdraw my second.
Mr. Chair, I will draw my, uh, motion just as well.
So procedurally, the council could just simply vote no or there's, it's not really, withdrawing a motion is not a proper Roberts rules, so they should just go to a vote and you can, you're free to vote against your own motion. That is perfectly fine.
Mr. Chair?
We can still discuss though, right, right now?
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Do you want to go out around the neighborhood and talk, I mean?
Mr. Chair? If, if, if I may, uh, I, that's kind of where I was going to continue and thank you, Mayor Devine. Uh, you brought, uh, to our attention some of the things I was going to ask. And is there an opportunity that you could potentially look at holding this?
Sure, we can hold it.
You know, for, kind of to do some of these suggestions. And I, I wouldn't want to see the park just abolish dogs, um, due to one bad apple. You know, that, I think we have a lot of other resources that we should look at and options before we, you know, just jump the gun and say, no dogs are allowed in the park.
The two dogs that ran off, I did not, I have not seen them in the area again. So I don't know who those people are. The one, the one that did, I know where they live, so that, that was, you know, that's how it's been handled.
So the owners were with the dogs? The owners were with?
The owner was with the dogs in both times and they grabbed the dogs and took off.
Okay.
But I've never seen them again in the, in the area. You know, if, if we could do something to enforce the leash laws, let's go for it. But we need to enforce something because I see a great deal of leashless dogs around this city. And I know there's a leash law and I said it to people other times. They're like, well, I got my dog under control. You may have your dog under control right now, but if you get in, in conflict with another dog, you may not have that dog under control anymore. So if we can do something to, you know, make the, make the enforcement of leash laws better, we can go do that too. I'd be happy for that.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm finished with the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, you know, I, I agree with Mayor Devine just as well. You know, the fact it is that, uh, you know, you know, once we started, uh, you know, just came across my mind, you know, I, you know, I do live across the parkway, uh, I mean, I mean, many people, they, uh, they have their dog running, you know, they throw a ball, you know, they go back. ball, you know, they go back and forth, you know? But they have their dog under control. I don't think any concern of, you know, kids around, you know, I mean, it's not the issue. I'm talking about the parkway on Connect Connect. So, so really, to me, I tried to make some changes by apply some restrictive rule just for Roger Park. I mean, I just digested more deeply and I feel, I don't think we really need to do that. The questions about posted as no dog allowed without being on a leash, to me, it's more logical, you know, if you want to go that route, you know, I think it makes more sense, you know?
Can we?
I mean, I mean, either way, I mean.
Right after the panhandling signs, can you do some dog leash signs?
Mike and I just looked at each other and we can address that.
And I don't know how many entrances there are to that park.
Technically, there's three. There's one on Seventy-Fourth and two on Seventy-Fifth.
We'll put that on our list.
Okay.
Okay, so, you good?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend calling for a vote on that motion, just to dispose of it. The motion to approve would be still on the floor.
Correct.
So there's, help, motion approved and it's been seconded, but we're, we vote what?
You can, you can all vote no if you'd like, the deliberative process, as you can change the vote.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Aye. Okay, there you go.
You did a good job, Alderman Roy.
Well, thank you. Thanks, I learned everything from you.
That's sad.
It is.
Patel has jokes too, boy.
Item thirty-two, Resolution twenty twenty-two zero four one one, Resolution approved, bid of MP Systems, Inc., for Beecher Street Stringlighting, a community development block grant project in the city of West Dallas, in the amount of three hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight, thirty-eight cents.
Thank you. That's why you're the vice chair. And we're going to hold that, right, Pete?
I would recommend that we vote against it.
Okay, but before we do that, and I kind of, is Patrick here? I can't. This is all for one owner here, these lights, pretty much, right?
No, it's a, it's a district, yes, there is a current owner of all the properties, but most of them.
Right, but this is kind of towards one individual, correct? Or am I wrong?
Well, it's qualified based on census track. It's not, I mean, the owner has invested a great deal in that area, yes.
Correct, and is there a way we could, you know, we're showing eighty-eight over budget, right, eighty-eight thousand over budget right now. Can he help? Can we? I can't believe I'm saying the word tiff. Can we have some tiff participation in that?
Mr. Chair.
I know, crazy, eh?
I, I. Hell froze over or something or what?
It did, man, it's crazy.
I did have, I did have a talk with Mark.
Yes.
And Mark told me that he has somebody that he can go to that can make the poles for him for a lot cheaper. And I said, he should talk to whoever at the city he's working with, because he's got a vendor who can do them cheaper.
So.
We still need to reject these bids. I would like to redesign it.
Okay, so we, and then, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to put this on the record, I have concerns. I, I spoke with Pete Daniels about this in the very beginning, when I saw it on our last council agenda. When I voted yes in favor of the two hundred thousand initially, I got a viable explanation. Things tend to be a bit more expensive compared to what Pete was looking at in Tosa, correct? I think that's what your, your role was, is to see what Tosa did, and this is what we want to duplicate. It does fall under our, you know, strategic plan. There's all kinds of good things that can come of it. However, I think going over budget as much as we are on this, I would not vote yes on it. I think that, that these monies can go to other areas. My biggest concern, and I just have to note this, there is a huge problem on Beecher as far as speeding. We need traffic calming measures. Monies like this would come in handy and be more beneficial, in my opinion, going in that direction. I'm not opposed to making a destination, but at this juncture, I think we really need to focus on traffic calming. And I would just add one thing, I really like the idea of the lights. I, I would like to see it in downtown West Dallas, though, to be honest with you.
Mr. Chair. Planning manager, Steve Scher.
Oh, Kale, maybe you've got some?
Who still want to talk?
I was just in, and tonight's administration and finance committee, they did place it on file.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, maybe Mark Lutz's guy would want to talk to whoever buys our street poles?
No, I'd like to.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, because it's a public bidding process, there's a very formal way of doing this, what needs to happen first, though, is for the committee to reject this and reject all bids. That would allow the engineers department to rebid and redo it RFP, RFQ, and get additional bids. And whoever Mark Lutz was talking to is one of the people who I'm sure could get qualified and feel free to bid at the next time.
Motion to reject.
Second.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Motion rejection and question. Go ahead, Alderman Patel.
Pete, the, the three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, I mean, I put two penny myself to make forty cents, you know? But anyway, the questions that I have, how many blocks is Beecher Street to?
Two blocks, just from Sixty-Eighth to Seventy-Eighth.
Yeah. So, so really, the, the cost, I mean, it sounds a lot of money, but come through block grant money, most of it, right?
Right, all of it.
All of it, really. So, so to me, I mean, where, where can you go in getting cheaper prices for, for those illumination bulbs, I call it, and poles and everything else, labor and everything else?
We're going to do street lighting in the whole neighborhood next year.
Yeah, see, that's.
There, there will be costs for conduit and stuff that we can, you know, that we'll be doing anyway. Yeah, when I looked at the wall with Tosa numbers, they, they spent five million dollars re-streetscaping, you know, their whole downtown, which is, when I picked out the streetscaping, the string, string light part, you know, I guess I didn't account for all that concrete was also done. So, part of it's my fault, I kind of underestimated, but I think when we do the street lighting next year anyway for the whole neighborhood, we'll have economies of scale, where we'll be doing the whole neighborhood, we'll be putting conduit in, we won't have to bother those businesses twice in two years. We could probably reuse the poles. What kind of happened the last minute is we found out the poles that we spec, which we're trying to match, you know, so that we don't have too many poles. The manufacturer told us, like, on the day of the bids, those poles aren't strong enough to, the string lights actually pull, you know, really pull on those poles, so they didn't recommend that we use those poles for the string lights. So, you know, to get poles that are strong enough, that added another forty-five thousand. So really, the true cost of this is going to be four hundred and twenty-eight thousand if we go, so, because there'd be another forty-five thousand for poles on top of the three thirty-eight, plus some consulting fees, so even if they had approved item twenty-five, we still would have been eighty-eight thousand under, over budget.
Yes.
So you would have had to approve another eighty-eight, eighty-eight thousand dollars in CBG funds. So I think if we try again next year and redesign and reuse poles and reuse conduit or, I mean, duplicate, eliminate some of that duplication, we can probably bring the price down, maybe not have such an elaborate crisscross pattern or, you know, a few, a few less string lights. We can bring the price down, this just, it's just getting kind of.
So, so how much price? I mean, of course, it's hard to estimate at this point. What would be the lesser prices, really?
I don't know. This is not my expertise, which is.
I mean, the way, the way things are going right now, I mean, I'm kind of concerned.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Correct.
And it's been seconded, it was to reject or deny or reject?
Reject all bids.
Yep.
Pardon me?
Reject all bids.
Reject all bids.
Basically, Mr. Chair, I think we want to lower the cost.
Right.
With new designs, so.
All in favor of rejecting a bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item thirty-three, Resolution twenty twenty-two zero four two three, Resolution approved, bid of Wolf Paving for street construction and utility adjustments in West Beecher Street from Ninety-Second to Ninety-Ninth Street in the city of West Dallas in the amount of six hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Budgeted item?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Pete, is this a new contractor? I don't recognize Wolf's name.
It is, but he seems very diligent. I mean, he's, he's working on other, the other four streets, Hayes, Vigo, Ninety-First and Orchard.
Okay.
And he's attacking it well, so.
I see.
So, yeah, he seems, he got all this paperwork and, you know, usually new contractors have a little trouble getting past the city attorney and stuff. So he did everything very diligently, so I'm optimistic.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-four, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four three eight, Resolution to amend an existing professional service contract with R.A. Smith to provide construction management of private property improvements for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Want to tell us a bit about that?
This is for the private property, so the lead service replacement.
Okay, yeah.
And lining the sanitary laterals and sump pumps in some cases. It's, it's a bit tedious, because you have to go and talk to each person and.
Right.
So R.A. Smith is overseeing the whole thing.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been.
Mr. Chair, have we ever done this before?
Yep, this is our third year.
Third year. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five, are we going to go into closed session? Is that the objective here, Kale?
Mr. Chair, I do have some public comment first, but I would, I would eventually ask the committee.
Resolution to approve a petition for the change of an alley located on the north side of the seventy-four hundred block of West Greenfield Avenue.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kale.
So, this was an item that I presented some time ago, I believe it was in May, as a possible solution. The committee said I should try to speak with the property owners and come back with a more specific proposal, because they expressed some interest in doing so. If you saw the, on the agenda tonight, there was an attachment for a copy of a petition. The strategy that I've selected is basically, there's a part in the law that allows all adjacent property owners to file a petition for a change in alley. It's a very quick procedure. It's not like the normal vacation and then condemning and buying and moving around. It's actually a relatively quick procedure. And so, the city is one of the owners, Noble Senior Living is another owner, Double B's is an owner, and the owner of Makoko's Building, which is Scott Bunker, is an owner. They all have different entity names, but those are the people behind these buildings that are going to be affected. This is a proposal to change the alley, because the way it currently is drawn behind those buildings is basically non-functional. It comes to effectively a dead end. It rides along the back of buildings, leaving absolutely no private property behind the buildings, but yet it doesn't provide any public service to the buildings, because anyone who parks there would block access to others. It's a really, it's a mess. It's created conflicts among the adjacent users, and it's not how the public is currently using that area. Right now, the public drives over city-owned property and continues west from the east. So, what I basically did is, on the map, drew where the public is currently using it as an alley, as the actual alley, and then taking the existing alley and dispersing it to the property owners, sort of extending their parcels to the north, and in one case, extending a parcel, Noble, slightly to the north and also slightly to the west, because they have an access door that they need to get to, and so it'll allow them to have that path to the access door, so that food service could drop off food and deliver directly to the kitchen. So, I've talked to all the property owners or their representatives. There's general agreement with this concept among the property owners, and I've presented them with the same petition. The issue for tonight is, one, I would just like the committee to weigh in on whether, as an owner of an adjacent property, the city wants to pursue this. And then, two, if you see in the petition, there are some blank lines. There are four blank lines I'd like to have filled in tonight if the committee wants to move forward. And that is, any type of consideration that the three private property owners would pay as a result of gaining that land to their parcels. And then also, if there is an interest in requiring a bond, one of the users, Double B's, is talking about doing some significant work in that back. It could be seventy to eighty thousand dollars worth of work in improving that area and building up infrastructure and making a very functional space for them. And so, given there's a large investment happening there, if there's any interest in doing a bond to ensure that that work gets done by a certain date, that is an option for the committee to consider as well. The other owners really haven't talked to me about any specific improvements they would make besides maybe minor concrete work, so I haven't included them there, any type of bond for those two users, but if they would want to come in and do work, that's something that could be considered through the normal permitting process. I just know that Double B's has indicated they have a significant desire to make some major improvements back there. So, any questions about this? I'm happy to talk about it in public session. The closed session I have reserved for, any discussions you want to have about those actual dollar numbers that go in those blanks? But the concept of whether you want to pursue this in general should be done in public.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Christian, go ahead, please.
Kale, when it comes to this specific, I'm trying to think of the design of downtown West Dallas altogether, all of them have this alleyways, correct?
Yes.
How, how does this differ from?
So, from Seventy-Fifth to Seventy-Sixth, there is an east-west alley behind every building at a certain elevation. This particular block is the only one in which Noble Senior Living is a lot deeper than the other buildings, and so the alley cannot go straight through. It would run right through Noble's building. So instead, the alley goes behind Noble and then swings south and then rejoins where it normally would be approximately, but the problem with that design is then it leads into private property owned by the city and the post office. And then, there's no way to, it doesn't actually go through, because there's a curb now built that actually blocks access to get back to the north-south alley, running between Seventy-Fourth and Seventy-Fifth Street. So, this would basically take the alley that was from Seventy-Fifth to Seventy-Fourth and then go around Noble, but rather than wrap next to the building to the west, it continues in a more westerly fashion, leaving that land behind Double B's, next to Noble and behind Mr. Bunker's property. That area would become private property instead. The city would be the one that loses private property, because right now, there's a sort of a weird angle, like rectangular shape that juts out from the parking lot the city owns north of Noble and rents out to the post office and to Noble. There's a weird private property piece that juts out and everyone just drives across it already. That is technically private property. So, the city would be losing private property in this process. The businesses adjacent would be gaining their private property, that is the difference, and the alley would be rerouted to the way that public generally has used it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Weigle, do you have anything?
I, I think in concept, that it's a, it's a great idea.
Oh, good.
I'm a little concerned because the reality is, there's a lot of public space there that various neighbors are using as parking, which is technically an alley. There's never been any enforcement on no parking there. There's also some private property sitting on public land right now and hasn't been worked in here, and I think that's what's driving this conversation. The, the concern, I, I have a couple of concerns. We're going to make that alley a lot narrower, and if you go by there on a lot of weekdays, you'll see at times multiple delivery trucks there for the businesses there. The post office does use that alley quite a bit. I think their semi's coming through, their trucks coming through there. One concern would be like, if the semi from the post office truck comes, he comes to the corner, he's south-north on Seventy Fourth Street, he sees three Cisco truck, a Reinhardt truck, and a Bier Capital truck there, he's going to say, you know what? I'm going to go all the way down, all the way down, you know, a block north and come around, you know? So, we will be making that alley narrower. We will be restricting that alley there a little bit. I think that's with the solution, I, I, I hope that this planned improvement has, have plans been approved yet by, have plans been submitted for this improvement? Have they been approved by our process? Can we build up this new, this, you said seventy thousand dollar, up to seventy thousand dollar improvement is going to look like? Because unless this solves the problems that are happening in that alley now, it's got to solve the problems for everybody, there is another solution for solving problems, which would be a lot simpler. That alley's existed like that for my, the entire time I lived, I've been like reading the landings since nineteen eighty-nine. The alley's serviced people back there well, and, you know, it's not like, it's not like it got changed lately, you know? So, um, those are, you know, I, I think in concept, it's a, it's a step in the right direction, but again, has, has this development, this new building or whatever's going to be built to house the smokers, I imagine? Has that been, have we seen pictures of it? Has it been designed? Um, because unless we do that, and I, I guess we're not really acting on this today, right? We're going to, we're, we're just trying to move the ball forward, I get that, so. But, uh, I, I think in concept, but I, I think the bond's going to be important to make sure that things happen, and especially in a timely manner on this. It's already been over a year that this situation has been existing as it is, so.
Mr. Chair, can try to.
Go ahead.
Try to answer some of the questions. Uh, I haven't seen any particular detailed plans. The owner of Double Bs has mentioned that he does have contractors standing by, so there must be some level of specificity to have even a, a quote. I think he's, he's here tonight, if you, if you want to ask him questions about it. Uh, and as far as solving the problems that are involving conflicts with neighbors, yes, that would be definitely one benefit of doing this. Not only does it actually line the alley up with how Google thinks it is, um, but it also, uh, would solve those user conflicts because the, um, in, in this process, there would be proper infrastructure built behind Double Bs to handle the smoker, um, to handle water access and other things like that. And I know the health department has been working with, uh, Timbers on how that would work or what would be required. Um, I don't know if official orders have been issued or it's been advisory-type orders, but there has been a level of specificity that, um, Bunker, or that Mr. Timbers should know exactly what needs to be done to fix that, and if not, um, if there's any details that need to be worked out, that's exactly what he would do with the health department to ensure that that's done. That would be one of the requirements within this agreement, is that it does comply with any type of health codes or building codes.
And as far as we know, it's not going to be used for parking areas, correct?
Nothing would stop them from being used as parking areas. It'd, it'd just become private property and could be used by the owners to the extent that they want to.
But if they go over the line with any bit of their property, we can cite them, correct?
If they obstruct the new alleyway, yes, and the vehicles could be towed and they could be cited for that.
Okay.
And we could insist on parking paint for where you have to park your car. You can't park at all, every different angle and everything, because there's a lot going on in that little corner there. We were there.
Sure.
Yesterday, and there's just.
There.
A lot.
There is, there's a lot going on, and it's, it's, it's a lot packed into one small area.
Yes.
Nothing would stop the city from marking lines on its own property. I think, do we use white lines in alleyways ever?
I, I meant, once it became private property, if it does.
If it becomes private property, my guess is that both users will build fences right on the property line, and that would be very clear where the property lines are, and users of the alley will, would know where the property line is and not to go.
Okay.
I would expect. Uh, Mr. Bunker, as we already said, he, he wants to build a fence. I assume Double Bs would probably build some sort of structure indicating where that line is. Noble will probably also have their, at least paint on their private property. I think they wanted it because their food delivery trucks, they wanted to park north of the building directly adjacent to it on their private property, as opposed to parking in the alley. Um, and that's one thing that they mentioned to me that would be beneficial for them because they could park the truck facing east, unload the semi-trailer, take it right down their walkway and load it, and it would be a very convenient way for them to have food service delivered at their, at their place. But yes, it's, it's a very busy area.
Go ahead, Alderman Weigl.
Are we talking about making, moving the city curb further north? Because that alley's already pretty narrow right there. Yes, that alley's really pretty narrow there already.
Yes, so, the alley under this proposal would be twenty feet from this curb line down.
Okay.
That would be the public alleyway, which is consistent with the width of the alleyways back here.
But the, we would, on the city-owned property that Noble rents, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be spending any money on changing that. That would all, those curbs would all stay there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the line would basically drawn along the southern edge of the southern part of these islands, and then twenty feet down would be the public alley. It would then go at a forty-five, approximately forty-five degree angle here. Um, this is actually not an alley, this is privately owned.
By the ci.
By the city, although people use it as an alley, it's not. But at least this would create an open, sort of triangular area that's all right-of-way, and then this alley would connect to it. So, these people using this, if they wanted to follow the alley, could go north. Practically speaking, they're going to go west, and since it's a city parcel, no one really cares.
No, yeah.
But, um, and this could be vacated at a different point in time if the city wanted to make that an official alley for any reason, but effectively.
Would there be a public hearing on this for the, and notifying the neighbors?
No, because it would be a petition submitted by all adjacent property owners.
Could there be a public?
City could order one without any type of.
I, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, however.
And then, the seventh story, I forgot the name of the owner already.
Noble.
Noble, okay. Their property's really not, not the building, obviously, but the sidewalk and green spot area out there, that would remain. We're not tearing any of that out in there.
Well.
Because there's all fiber optics right there, right by that sidewalk.
We, the city, would not do anything. It'd become their private property, and then it'd be up to them to decide.
Okay.
How they're going to address it.
Yeah, because it's just loaded with underground fiber.
If it's, if it's worth their investment to do so, they would make whatever changes they need to make.
Right.
It'd be approximately nine or ten feet wider here, and approximately nine feet, nine feet wide right to the west of their building.
Yeah.
Down to a point.
Okay.
So, it's a very, it's a nine-foot wide approximately sliver they would gain on the north and west side of the building. Okay, Google. Okay, Google. Really excited. Um, now my phone listens to me.
We're going to, anything else?
Anybody.
We're going to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion, has that been seconded?
You just want to read the.
You have to read them.
Oh, I have to read that first, okay. For agenda item number thirty-five, the committee may convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-four, parentheses one, parentheses E, for delivering or negotiating the purchase of, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The committee may reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda.
So, now we make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
It moved to second. Alderman Rankie.
Aye.
Alderman Grisham.
Aye.
Alderman Pedali. Alderman Spence. And the chair votes aye, we're in closed session. Mark, you got to go.
Is that, is that?
Somebody dropped her.
Okay.
Card?
One credit card, it snuck under the.
Oh, it was underneath the TV.
Oh, is that you, when you had?
Yeah, that's the one they should.
That, that just blends right in.
Yep.
You should have bought us food.
I didn't see it, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, they all went flying.
Wow.
Okay, we are now in open session and I will turn the floor over to Cale Decker, our city attorney, to discuss what was discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would ask that the committee make a motion to direct me to negotiate with the adjacent property owners for a payment amount, and also negotiate with the property owners for a bond amount for the work. And then on top of that, just in general, like the motion to say that it approves me to proceed forward as far as the city's interest in becoming a petitioner on a future date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.
Now we got advisory.
Advisory, come to order. Assistant Ministerie, all members are present. Number forty-four, additional Republican Party nominee for election inspector appointment for the 2022 to 2023 term for Todd Lewandowski. Are we adding an additional person or?
Okay. One credit card snuck under the TV.
Oh, it was underneath the TV.
Oh, is that the one you had?
Yeah, that's the one that...
That just blended right in.
Yep.
You should have bought us food.
I didn't see it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, they all went flying.
Okay, we are now in open session and I will turn the floor over to Cale Becker, our city attorney, to discuss what was discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would ask that the committee make a motion to direct me to negotiate with the adjacent property owners for a payment amount and also negotiate with the property owners for a bond amount for the work. And then on top of that, just in general, like the motion to say that it approves me to proceed forward as far as the city's interest in becoming a petitioner on a future date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.
Now we got advisory.
Advisory. Advisory come to order. As the minutes reflect, all members are present. Number forty-four additional Republican Party nominee for election inspector appointment for the 2022 to 2023 term for Todd Levandowski. Are we adding an additional person or is there a vacancy?
The parties have the ability to nominate inspectors and so that's what they're doing. So, but you need to approve.
Motion to approve.
There's not necessarily a vacancy. It's just part of what we need to do.
They can add if they want to. I see.
Yeah, they want to make sure there's no fraud.
Motion and second. Yep.
I did second, yes.
Any additional?
No, I just wanted to say, Madam Chairman, they want to make sure there is no fraud in West Dallas. That's what it is.
I don't think you have to worry about that.
No, I don't think we have to worry about it, but they are.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.